I'd like to start tonight with a recognition of two Newburyport residents who have recently passed away. Peter Galician, a distinguished educator, coach, remembered by many for his athletic exploits and longtime resident. And Al Moskowitz, also a distinguished educator, a clear voice, a clear mind. To all those who knew him, he's someone we'll be missing in the future. Just a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Now, the pleasure of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. There's all the mayors right there. Oh, no, we were looking for-- We'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Roll call for the meeting of February 29th. Councilor Devlin.
Present.
Councilor Earl.
Present.
Councilor Ragman.
Here.
Councilor Junta.
Present.
Councilor Tonto.
Present.
Councilor Vogel.
Present.
Councilor Z.
Present.
Councilor Cameron.
Here.
Councilor Conville.
Present.
Councilor Cronin.
Present.
Noting, Councilor O'Brien is absent. We have a forum.
Okay, let's see if there are any late filed items.
There's one late filed item which I sent around to all today. It is too many pages to print out. It is parking information submitted by Councilor Devlin. It's actually a report that's already posted, although to be conservative procedurally, he is submitting as a late file.
Is there a second? There was. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then we'll click on the agenda for, is it--
Communication?
No, no, no. What committee would that have been to?
Communication.
Just put it under communication. Okay, thank you. Also, the mayor's comment. Mayor, do you have something you'd like to share this time? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Is there any public comment?
Oh, sorry. No. Would you like to speak?
I'm sorry, he's right here. The name here is Mark Bailey. Mr. Bailey, would you like to approach?
Thank you. Mark Bailey, current chair of the Newburyport Chamber of Commerce. I know you're not voting on the garage tonight, but what I wanted to do is make sure that all of you have received the position statement of the chamber. And we are for the Tickham Street Lot. I also wanted to let you know, and I have copies here in case anyone needed. We are in the process of reaching out to our downtown membership. We've called 90 emails and phone calls to the local retail and restaurants. To date, we have 42 responses. Of those responses, 57% are in favor of the Tickham Street Lot being the future garage. Another 10% are in favor of a garage. 14 are in favor of additional parking in garage. And seven are no garage whatsoever. So again, this is a work in progress. I wanted to let you know where we currently stand. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review the position statement. If you have any concerns, questions for the chamber, Anne and I are both available at any point. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask the other question?
Yeah, sure. Councilor Junta.
In your survey, was there any questions on whether they'd like to possibly rent a spot or reserve a spot in the garage?
We haven't got that detailed with regards to that. Now, we certainly can't poll the entire membership. What we did was try to focus on the businesses downtown, whether it's service retail or restaurant. We did not pose that question specifically. It is something we can do. If that's a request of this council, we can certainly do that.
I'd be very interested in that. Yep, thank you.
So annualized basis?
Just to see if they would be interested in renting spots either quarterly or yearly.
Okay. Sure. Absolutely.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor.
Will that information be available to us? What you're coming up with right now, will that information be available to the council?
We will, well, I mean, it's not a formal poll. We didn't want to poll the entire membership because we felt like it only really affected a core group in the downtown area. But that's certainly something that we can provide to the council when that information is compiled. You know, chances are, we won't get a response from all of our members. We typically don't. And quite frankly, you know, 46% is actually fairly high for something like that. But we are going to continue to speak with people and provide that information to you via email or, you know, on the 14th, during public comment. I'll certainly step back up and provide you our findings, you know, positive and/or negative.
Councilor Devlin? You and I had spoken about it, and you were gonna, you would, the questions that you were asking, at least that you related to me, were excellent questions. Are they, do you have a, you're not the only one doing calls. Do you guys have standard questions that you're asking?
You know, it's really, are you in favor of a parking garage? If so, you know, which location? Quite frankly, the Tickham Street Lot has come up. And most of the people that I have discussed with, some of the retailers, both on In Street and on State, said that the garage would kill their business on Green Street. They were in favor of Tickham. A few were adamantly against any garage or any change whatsoever. We expect some of that. But it's a vast minority. You know, predominantly, the people that we've talked to, there was one individual that wanted satellite parking, but understood that that's not on the table at this time. But in light of, in lieu of satellites, you prefer Tickham over Green. You know, again, we haven't reached everybody yet, but we're going to continue to do that.
And Mr. Bailey, if you would convey that to your members, you know, our desire to work with the chamber, and we appreciate the fact that you've been so active as a chamber in advising us about what some of the merchants need. I'll also give you some feedback from speaking to a couple of In Street merchants for the past week. We're aware of the fact that the construction of that fountain has, in their minds, been going on for a long time. And I know that the mayor would be eager to talk with you if they had some thoughts about how to move it along faster than it's moving. We all want to see it completed and up and functioning so that they have a clear pedestrian access to their storefronts from the In Street area.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
No, I just said, "thank you."
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, there being no one else who's signed up to speak, I guess we could move to the mayor's comment. Mayor?
Thank you, councilors. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight again to give you a brief update. First and foremost, I would like to extend my sincerest thanks to all of you for the hours that you have put in in meetings and your due diligence, reaching out to constituents, reading through copious documents that we have provided. We have, on our side on the city, have tried very hard to be responsive to all of your questions and concerns by tracking down that documentation information, and certainly will do the same again for your meeting on Thursday night. And would like to request, if you have additional questions or clarification on any information that you have currently, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, Heather, or to Andy Port for, if you have additional questions that you would like answered before Friday night or have us have additional information for you on Friday night.
Thursday night.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Friday.
Oh, no.
You can be there.
No, I will be there Thursday night, thank you. I appreciate the correction, yes. Again, I attached my statement viewpoint that was in the paper last week for you to read, in case you had any chance to read that. You know that we're running into the, you know, last, your next meeting will be the last time that we can take a vote. We've expressed concerns to you, and you've heard it from Joe Castella, from the RTA regarding the loss of the federal funding by the end of March if we don't get all of our paperwork and application forward. I can't emphasize enough that this is, I think you heard too, a very real date that we are up against. We have been studying this for decades. We now have the point where we have $7 million in funds. We've worked with the Butters. We have tried to address downsizing, downscaling, not taking a Butters' properties. We'll continue to work with all of you, the Butters. You know, once we get past the approval for final design, there is still tremendous amount of communication and work that we will do together as we go forward. Weston Braken, I am happy to report that the individual who has been on the loose has been caught in Andover. We got word about 5:00 today. Of course, reached out to Councilor Junta to let him know directly. He and Batcop and his cohort were breaking into homes in Andover. So, given his record, I am hoping that things can move forward and we can get this gentleman off the streets and create a sense of security again for the residents of our community tomorrow night at 7:30 at the Senior Community Center. In the small dining room is where we will be holding a neighborhood meeting to talk to residents directly about their concerns. Marshall Howard and Sergeant Simons and myself will be there to have a conversation and to establish a relationship with Simons, with the particular neighborhood.
Is the marshal coming out of retirement? Murray.
What did I say?
Howard. It's okay.
I'm sorry. Who me?
You're the marshal, Friday night.
Oh, sorry. All right, well, I'm glad you're paying attention. See, that's what I'm really, you know, anyway. Marshall Murray and Sergeant Simons and myself will be there tomorrow night to meet with the residents, to talk about what's been going on in terms of the break-ins over off of Turkey Hill and the adjoining neighborhoods. We are in really tight space for space tomorrow night because there is no space here. We're meeting there, but there also is in the main hall elections going on. So it will be a little tight in the room adjacent to the kitchen, but we'll make it work. Plum Island, we did receive a proposal from NECO, who was the company that we brought out to take a look at what we can do to address the erosion. It is being reviewed or will be reviewed internally by our legislature, as Commissioner Suwerberg. And from there, we will then determine whether or not we need a second opinion regarding whether or not this is actually the fix that we want to put forward out there. There's still some questions, some consultants about the report, and there'll be more information coming forward as we begin this initial review of the proposal from NECO. Last week, we had a very productive meeting, I believe, at the Brown School, reaching consensus about moving forward on the disposition of the school. The school committee will be voting on whether or not to decommission the building as a school, and the property will then become under the guise of the city. At that point, our recommendation is to complete the Winter Street Associates feasibility study and then prepare an RFP to put out to see what we can come up with. Obviously, the community wants the playground there, and we have committed or made a commitment to the community that we will continue to do so. But the building is, needs, the structure's in good shape overall, you know, the bones, but, you know, windows, heat, roof, all those kinds of amenities, toilets, elevators, there's asbestos in the building. This is way beyond the capability of the city at this juncture. Talked to residents out there about whether or not they would even be interested in considering additional debt exclusion to take on renovations of this building, and every head in the room just, you know, shook their head. We've asked a lot of our residents in terms of the two school projects and the Senior Community Center. And at this point, I think this is in the best interest for us to move this process forward. So we'll get back in touch with you after the vote from the school committee on March 7th. And obviously, the school, the city council will have to take a vote at that point also in terms of how we move this process forward. We anticipate finishing the feasibility study, should the school committee take the vote, and then putting out an RFP for creative adaptive reuse of the building. So a lot more work that has to happen on this particular project, and we'll keep you posted every step of the way. We have been actively reviewing department head budgets as we move forward for, to prepare our FY '17 budget. At this juncture, I think that the word on the street and what I'm hearing from other mayors is that we're disappointed in Chapter 70 funding, and there was a big rally at the State House today trying to get the governor and the legislature, actually, to increase more money to Chapter 70. So we'll keep you posted on that piece also. And finally, tomorrow, we kick off Addiction Prevention and Awareness Month. I give a lot of credit to Andy Egmont and to Kathy Rikio, the head of school nursing, who have put together a whole series of events. I've attached the schedule for you. There is more information on Beacon Coalition. You all have been invited Wednesday night for a stakeholder dinner and then to hear a very powerful speaker, Dr. Wu Pote, who basically is one of the first positions to step forward and say, "We've created this problem with addiction. We need to do something to help." So she is coming to do a series of presentations. She'll be doing a training with hospital staff, and then we'll be doing a presentation on Wednesday night after our dinner. So if you haven't RSVP'd to my office about coming to the dinner on Wednesday night, please do so. And finally, tomorrow is a primary in our city. It's a presidential primary, and I encourage all residents to get out there and vote. Thank you. Questions?
Any questions from the council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Okay, there being no questions with the mayor, let's move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Clerk. That consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for February 11th, 2016. There's one transfer, transfer number four, DPS Gas and the amount of $90,000 to DPS Fuel and Oil, same amount. That was in for approval, that's been changed to go to BNF, Budget Finance. There are three communications. First communication is number 22. It's petition by merchants for more surveillance. That was to be received and filed. That's going to Public Safety. Communication number 23 is regarding the Hines Assistance Fund Race, to be held June 6th, 2016. That's also to go to Public Safety. And communication number 24 is a Cambridge Letter Regarding the Use of Streets for Festivals and Events. That's also going to Public Safety. There are a number of appointments, first reading. First appointment is number 17, Captain Johnny Walker, 64A Boardman Street, Assistant Harbor Master Constable until March 1st, 2018. Likewise, Derek A. Sehagen, 17 Sawyer Street, Merrimack, the same Assistant Harbor Master Constable until March 1st, 2018. There are four reappointments. The first is appointment number 19, Ed McGrath, 28 Olive Street, Historic Commission, March 31st, 2018. Malcolm Carnway, 22 Strong Street, same Historic Commission, September 30th, 2019. Charles Carroll, 25 Hill Street, to the Council on Aging until May 1st, 2021. Richard A. Eaton, 4 Horton Terrace, Council on Aging until May 31st, 2021. And that, with those two changes, is the consent agenda this evening.
What's the rule of the council?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then we can move on to the regular agenda. We have a late file from the mayor that's the mayor's update. I guess I'd accept the motion to receive and file the mayor's update.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have another late file. What is the wish of the council with respect to Councilor Devlin's late file?
Move to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second. Budget and Finance. Any discussion?
It's also the committee of the whole.
So moved.
So seconded.
Moved and seconded, so it'll go to Budget and Finance and Committee of the Whole. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Well, let's move on to the second reading of appointments. Mr. Clerk.
Second reading, the first one is Ted Waldron, 14 Oak Street, to the License Commission until June 1st, 2018. That's followed by a number of reappointments. Monica Blondin, 154 High Street, to the Library Board of Directors until January 15th, 2023. David Deluski, 334 R. Merrimack Street, to the Tree Commission until November 1st, 2018. Janine Murphy, 10 Plummer Avenue, to the Akerson Common Commission until March 30th, 2019. Barry McBride, 5 Pine Street, Salisbury, Assistant Wiring Inspector until January 31st, 2017. David Sink, 6 Laurel Road, Electric Inspector until January 31st, 2017. Paul Don, 333 High Street. Harbor Commission until 331st, January 31st, 2019. Paul Rooney, there's a change of address. It's actually 53rd Street, Harbor Commission, May 31st, 2019. Two more. Brad Duffin, 2 Cutting Drive, Harbor Commission until April 2nd, 2019. And Douglas Bolick, 8 Court Street, to the Board of Registries until September 1st, 2018. And that is the list of appointments. Second reading.
Motion to approve collectively?
Second.
The motion has been to move these collectively, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
This is a roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry. This should be a roll call. You're correct.
Councilor Devlin? Yes. Councilor Earl?
Yes.
Councilor Ragman?
Yes.
Councilor Junta?
Yes.
Councilor Tontar?
Yes.
Councilor Vogel?
Yes.
Councilor Z?
Yes.
Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
Councilor Conville?
Yes.
Councilor Cronin?
All right, let's move on to orders, then.
First order is, the only order, is order number 11, with respect to Section 13-168, winter hours restrictions on certain streets.
Motion for Public Safety?
Second. I'm sorry, I could not hear that motion.
Motion to refer to Public Safety?
Public Safety and seconded. Any discussion? Councilor Cronin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You will notice to the rest of the council that my name is affixed to this. It is affixed to this as a member of the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, and I'm just being used as a conduit to get this to the city council. I would assume, no, I will virtually guarantee that there will be changes on this. Or, well, there'll be changes on this. And this will be going to our committee, and as chair, I would solicit any and all input. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Earl's?
I guess this is relatively easy for me to say, as I no longer represent a committee of the whole. But it's, somebody needs to get in touch, more than just the paper announcement, that this is being discussed in these neighborhoods. It's going to be a big reach out. This may affect a lot of people's lives. I don't know every street. Essex, it will affect a little bit. I know that. So this is a long list. It's a lot of people being affected. On Lime Street, for example, it's very tight. People like to park, especially contractors like to park on one side of the road. So there has to be outreach here when we go to committee.
Agreed. And I'm going to ask the clerk to read the street names while the ordinance is going to committee and ask the press to make some note of that. Just a second. Councilor Cronin, first.
One of the, one of my hopes was, before we start a complete outreach here, that maybe through the city council itself, we could pretty well cull this down to certain streets that may still be on the list. Because I can see in Ward 3 that there are certain non-starters that I don't really see a reason to get neighborhoods concerned when there is no concern to be had. So that's, that's how I would like to approach it, to have a little discussion first, and then, at that point, start the outreach.
Councilor Tontar? Did you, will step in here?
Chairman, I believe the city had a pilot program last year of certain streets that, do we have any results from that pilot program? It'd be great to have it in committee if we did. I mean, last, last winter was, I must show, was a good pilot.
It was, it was no pilot program results from last year. Last year, there was an autopilot that argued into the ground with snowfall and whatnot. Yeah, there's--
Oh, I remember.
Yeah, you remember that? Yeah, so, you know, we don't really have that.
So we don't have that?
No.
Councilor Ragman?
Yes, Mr. President. So I think about 11 of these are in my ward and Ward 2. A lot of them are non-starters, just as counselor, I'm sorry, the counselor from Ward 3 mentioned. So yes, before we advertise this and inflame the public, I really think, since this is the first time I'm even seeing this, that we, let's have a nice calm discussion in Public Safety and winnow down the list and get a list that we all can work on productively. And then absolutely, there's going to be a heckle of a lot of outreach for whatever's left.
All right. Then there's no need, I guess, based on what I'm hearing from the councilors, to inflame sentiment over something that may not actually affect people. We'll allow council, councilors to discuss this in committee publicly noticed, in hiding, but have their discussions and then come back to the council with some recommendations. Councilor Z?
I'm not sure who motioned, but would there be interest in sending it to Committee of the Whole as well, since it's going to probably touch a number of wards here, just a common suggestion?
Is that a motion? Ma'am?
Actually--
Can I?
You can, but it's not recommended. You moved.
Okay.
You moved to refer to Public Safety, but someone could--
Yeah, just a friendly--
Make a friendly amendment--
If there's interest, I'll do it, but not at this time. Councilor Ragman?
Mr. President, I think it is very specific to wards 2 and 3, so, so long as I'm assured by Public Safety that I'll have a forum, I don't know that it's necessary to drag everybody. You're all welcome, I would think, but it is very specific to downtown.
That sounds reasonable. Councilor Cronin?
I was just going to say, maybe perhaps we can get started, and then we can come back and ask for Committee of the Whole if need be. I think we can plow through this, no pun intended.
Oh, no, I think it was intended. Having said that, one moment. Councilor Earl, did you want to jump in here?
Yeah, just one last thing. I don't want to be, I don't know where these came from. I don't know if there was any resident input, so maybe some of the residents want this and will be dismissing them without notifying them, and sure enough, they're on the table. So if that's not the case, if it came from a separate committee and there was no real resident input, perhaps I live on Otis and I was really wanting this to happen, I don't want it dismissed offhand because I'm a shop to me.
Very quickly, it's all, it's all internally one department.
Okay. Councilor Ragman?
I'm sorry, but since Otis Street was invoked, ironically, I've gotten a petition from an owner on Otis about Garden and Otis for the exact opposite approach. So it would be contrary, actually, to what the ground swell has been for. So just so the councilor at large's mind is put at rest.
All right, since we've tipped our hand on a couple of streets, I think it's unfair to all the rest. Let's just read through the list. If the clerk would do that, so that it's on the table, the press is aware of it, people who are watching tonight may have something to say to their ward councilors.
Fair enough.
Okay, so the list of streets are as follows, that may or may not be affected. I'll get the guests. Atkinson, Gordon, Center, Elm, Essex, Franklin, Fruit, Garden, Greenleaf, Lime, Merrill, Middle, Orange, Otis Place, Pike, Plum, Prospect, Salem Street, Ship, Temple. Thank you. Okay. The motion's on the floor. Excuse me. Yes, the motion is still on the floor to refer to committee. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. What's next up?
You'll see on the agenda, Mr. President, that there's two ordinances. They're simply placeholders. There was not enough time to get them advertised. They'll have a second reading, at least they'll be on the agenda for a second reading for March 14th, those two.
So without publication, we can't act on these. They'll be on our next agenda coming up, and the council president will be back, ready, tanned, and enthusiastically leading us through these. Committee items, Budget and Finance, please.
Motion to remove transfer 003020816.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve?
Second. And there's a second. Discussion. Counselor Tantar?
President, this is, we have been doing this every year, this is a reserve fund that is set aside from compost stickers and the like, to pay for the chipper upkeep, and also for salary for the environmental persons, so it's really pro forma.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other items out of Budget and Finance?
Motion to remove Order 008020816.
The Furbosa Plastic Settlement?
Furbosa Plastic Settlement acceptance.
And there's a second?
Second.
Where did I hear that? Counselor Vogel? Discussion. Oh, I'm sorry.
We haven't removed it yet.
I stand corrected. All those in favor of taking this out of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve?
Second. And seconded. Discussion. Counselor Tantar?
President, this is a settlement, and this is simply Newburyport's piece of the broader settlement. It's for PCV pipes? PC...
EDC.
Yeah, thank you. Right, that were not to spec, they were thinner than they were supposed to be. We've been told that in Newburyport, there have been no problems with these pipes, but we are party to the suit, and this is our share of it. So, in committee, it was a 3-0 vote.
Counselor Cameron? Do we have a sense of how, you know, of any of the pipe used in Newburyport in that time period, how much of it might have been from this company? I believe the mayor said probably zero, but I, no.
No, that's not true. Is my mate?
Yeah, please, to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this is, these are, this PVC pipe was installed on the Plum Island project. The city did not order the materials for the project, the contractor did. Our city engineer, once we were notified of this lawsuit under the False Claims Act by the Attorney General, our city engineer reviewed the plans and calculated that approximately 67,953 linear square feet of this PVC pipe was installed on Plum Island. However, it was made by two different manufacturers. One is IPEX, and the other is JM, and JM is the company, the manufacturer, that had the false claims suit. The contractor could not supply the city with the amount of pipe of that 67,000, which was manufactured by IPEX, and which was manufactured by JM. But, the AG was very satisfied with the information that the city could provide, in terms of the amount of square feet installed, and they did a calculation, and came up with this proportion for a settlement for the city. Obviously, we're not the only community as part of this class action.
If you could stand for a moment longer, the question from the chair is, how does that affect the warranty for those materials?
It's all, it's all a question. The intention is that this money, upon acceptance, will be placed into the, into a trust fund to go only toward Plum Island water and sewer repairs, should that happen. Again, the mayor has indicated, in her conversations with the Attorney General's office, that there isn't an indication that there has been a problem yet, but the manufacturer did not manufacture the pipe according to spec, so...
Further questions, the counselors? So, we have a motion that's been seconded and discussed. Is there anything else the folks would like to say on this matter? All those in favor of accepting the settlement state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Any other items coming out of Budget and Finance?
That's it for tonight.
That's it. General Government?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time. Joint Education?
Nothing at this time.
License and Permits. Counselor Vogel?
Motion to remove Communication 014-02-0816, the Fat Cabbie Transportation.
Second. All those in favor of taking this out of committee?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. The License and Permits Committee met this evening and discussed this. Just a little bit of background, this had come before council last fall, and as it turned out, there was a question about one of the drivers, and the application was rejected through considerable diligence and effort with the clerk, and I thank him for his effort and time. The license was resubmitted without that particular driver. We had a nice discussion with the applicant this evening, and the committee voted all in favor of approval.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any additional items out of License and Permits?
Motion to remove Communication 19-02-0816, second-hand motor vehicle sales license for State.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second. And seconded. Any discussion?
Everybody awake?
Counselor Vogel?
Thank you. License and permits, met on this evening with the applicants, again, with the considerable thanks to the clerk, all items are in place, and the application is in order. What's interesting is that this is the mobile station, owner of the mobile station is moving his repair operation. It was quite insightful. In any event, all is in order, and the vote was three in favor of approval.
Further discussion? Counselor Cameron?
This is more of a procedural comment. I don't think either of these was in the packet, at least they're not in mine. You know, we'd need a motion for the last one, and for this one, to waive the rules, because our rule is, it needs to be part of the packet.
If I could speak to that. What Counselor Cameron is referring to, he's correct, there's an order that was passed two years ago now, maybe a year and a half, that required everything that was coming out of committee to be copied and put into the packet. There is at least one, if not more, counselors that were questioning how much paper there was. I then approached the sponsoring counselor for that, and he indicated to me that it was certainly fine with him, and the intention that he originally had was to leave it up to every individual counselor. In a pure sense, the rules should be amended to reflect that.
Where does that leave us procedurally, Richard?
Well, it leaves us procedurally with, the order really should be amended. It was Counselor Cronin's order, maybe two years ago, that stated just that, and...
Alternatively, we could suspend the rules for the purpose of considering this motion, and...
And the previous.
Then come back at it.
I'll make that motion.
So, it would be an amendment to the original motion, to suspend the rules that can be taken up tonight.
Second.
Thank you. Everyone understand what we're doing?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor of suspending the rules, so we can act on this matter tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then if I could...
The motion is still up for consideration. Richard, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, parenthetically, that if someone could move to amend that order, I'd be happy to draft the amendment. At least that would get me out of limbo.
Are you looking for that now?
No.
No, let's first act on this, and perhaps this is a matter that can be taken at our next meeting.
True.
Fair enough?
It is.
Okay, Counselor, Vogel's motion is still on the floor.
Procedurally, where would you like me to go?
Motion to waive the rules, I don't think so.
We've already acted to waive the rules, to allow consideration of this matter, this matter is up for consideration on the floor.
Yeah, call the question.
Motion to waive the rules is on the floor.
I believe we acted on that.
No, you already voted.
I'm sorry, I'm an error.
Call the question.
Motion to waive the rules, so that this matter can be taken up.
Procedurally, both of them? Both questions? That's what I've got.
Okay. So that it's an amendment to the motion, and now it's consideration of the motion with its amendment. Am I correct?
You are.
Thank you.
So... I'm not sure where you want me to go. Isn't it a vote now, before that?
Yes, it is. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, do you want me to motion to approve? I'm not sure where you want me to go.
We just approved it. We're done.
We're done?
We're done.
I'm just looking to you for guidance.
Yes.
Can I?
Your hand gets two licenses, and we vote on it twice?
Counselor Agaman?
I think if we just vote on the previous one again, that we're all belt and suspenders, because we just voted on that motion.
Okay.
We suspended the rules for both of them, we only voted on one of them.
Motion to reconsider the previous vote.
That's right.
Motion to reconsider?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve?
Second. Now, motion to approve which item, Counselor?
Fat Cabbie.
Fat Cabbie.
With the suspension of the rules, allowing it to be considered.
Thank you.
And there's our second.
Second.
Okay, so we are, again, considering Fat Cabbie in a manner that is procedurally consistent with our rules. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Anything else out of License and Permits?
No, thank you.
Neighborhood City Services? No. Planning and Development? Counselor Cameron?
Mr. President, nothing to be removed from committee tonight. We will be taking up the change to the zoning map, and the smart growth amendment with the planning board, hoping to get that scheduled in the next couple of weeks, and we'll let counselors know about that. And the other thing I just wanted to bring to your attention, I spoke with Planning Director Andy Port today, and we'll be, the city will be scheduling a public forum about the master plan, probably later, late March. As we know, we transferred some money for them to hire a consultant to assist with that process. The assistant planner is now back to work after being out on maternity leave, so that will help as well. And, a couple of weeks after that, we'll have a public forum on the zoning changes that have been worked on for about a year and a half, so those are moving. Thank you.
And Counselor, is there any urgency to act on this communication regarding the building commissioner?
No, I think we would probably receive and file that. I think the point was to, just to ensure that the mayor was going to have an open process, and that will be happening.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Agaman?
I just wonder if the Chair of the Committee could let everyone know about the hearing that we're going to have for the two nominees to the ZBA? Do we have that scheduled?
Yeah, that will be, it's a joint meeting of Planning and Development and General Government. It's going to be before our next city council meeting on March 14th, I believe it's scheduled for 6:30, and I apologize if you were not aware of that. So, that's Planning and Development and General Government.
Very well, thank you, Counselor Agaman. Thank you, Counselor Cameron. Is that it for Planning and Development then?
Yes.
Public Safety?
Yes, motion to remove Communication 015, Block Party, on Wells Drive.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion to receive and file.
Second. Motion to receive and file. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else from Public Safety?
Yes, motion to remove Communication 016, Chopta Tua.
Second.
Motion to approve?
I think we've got to get that out of committee first. All those in favor of removing this from committee, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve? Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an event that goes on all the time, probably about its sixth or seventh year now, if I recall. It doesn't close any streets, it doesn't close any sidewalks, it basically was courtesy coming to us, it came out of committee 2 to nothing.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any additional matters?
Yeah, the final item, motion to remove Communication 017, Spring Fever, Five Cat.
Second. There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Out of committee?
Motion to approve?
Second. It's removed and seconded. Any discussion?
Again, very quickly, this is a fundraiser for the Brez Elementary School, it's approximately 250 runners, this is probably, again, the fifth or sixth year. The only reason I'm standing up to speak to it at all tonight is that the organizers were gracious enough to give us three different options that we could choose from, and they came out of committee with a 2-0 recommendation for option number two, which puts them on the rail trail for a jari of the race, which gets them off city streets, this is, has all the upper sign-offs and insurance, and again, it was 2-0.
And there are no other events scheduled on the rail trail at that time? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public Utilities Committee, is there anything in committee? My agenda's cut off. Richard, is there anything?
No.
Rules Committee?
Nothing to report.
Good as the order. Counselor Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. As much as I'm going to be missing it, unable to attend Thursday night's meeting, having just orthoscopic surgery on my left knee, I decided to join my right knee with a torn meniscus, so I won't be there, not that I really would love to be, but I just thought I'd let you all know that with my seatless absence, it's not out of...
Negatives.
Yeah, lack of concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the night.
Thanks.
Great. Counselor Earls?
Unfortunately, due to a previous professional commitment, I won't be able to make a Thursday meeting also. It does not mean I'm uninterested, far be it for me to say that I'm very interested. I hope people do still attend, and do still be vocal of what you envision. Thank you very much. Thanks, Counselor.
Counselor Junta?
I just want to put a second reminder out there of the meeting that we're having Thursday at the Senior Center for the folks in the West End.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, tomorrow. Sorry, it's Friday night. Yep. Friday night. Marshall Howard, right? Right. And I just wanted to extend my thanks out to the Newburyport Police Department with the thorough job they did at my home, and I really appreciate the support they gave my family, and, again, the nice job they did for us. So, the residents of the West End have been very happy seeing the patrols that have been riding through the West End for the last few days, and it's really, we're a little bit unnerved, and it's great to see the police presence that we have right now, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other items? The good is the order. Motion to overturn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're out of here.